I need to signify, I'm the United States of America and to the Republic on which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we need to do the, uh, I call it waiting order, we need to do nominations for president and vice president. I'm sure everyone's dying to get those spots.
Before we make any nominations, can we ask if anybody's interested? Or if anybody's not interested?
I'd be interested.
In what?
President. Basically, I'm in town all the time. Unfortunately, ladies and gentlemen, I have jobs. I'm retired. She says, you know, one day you will get there. But, you know, I can, if there's something comes up, I can be around. The only one's known is the only time I'm out of town is doctor appointments. Whatever. Makes sense. I would rather do it no more, but I see that every year.
There you go.
There I am.
Nominate Derek Cole, president.
What did I say? All pay.
Nominate Derek Tipton, vice president.
All pay.
Uh, any opposed?
Yeah. Thanks to board.
Switch him up.
You want to say now?
I will take it down here. I'm going to go over here, turn it easy. I'll give you a little bit of minutes, probably about twenty minutes.
I don't know if you need that Donald Trump.
Oh, okay.
We usually have.
Alright, you've all had a chance to look over the minutes from the last meeting, I hope. When they accept a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, uh, this is my fifteenth meeting.
So. All is favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Now we have an appointment of the department heads.
What we'll need is a motion to go ahead and we have to do this, this is basically just something we need to do, um, just to approve Jim, Matt, and Todd as the department heads for twenty twenty-six. So you'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, God Dickinson's chief of police, Matt Royce as utility superintendent, and Jim Franklin as fire chief.
Second. All those in favors?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Now we're here for those department heads. Jimmy, you want to go first?
A couple, well, a couple things. Run for force for December. Had twelve total runs, eight township, four in town, and I don't know just listed the what actual runs was so far for them. I don't have the correct totals. Township fifteen, town seven. Total's twenty-two, because I've also got on there which, uh, township they corresponded to.
Freshen on the entry, could that be twenty-five?
Yes.
I pulled up the template, I didn't change that.
Was it before twenty-five, I suppose the template doesn't change it. You always catch my mistakes, Ross.
I try.
Uh, means I'm reading that.
Yes.
Any questions? Uh, the next part, I talked about the use of old town building. I came up with a list of things that, uh, possibilities that we could do if we, if it was acceptable, we could use it. Possibly making the current station more usable and safer. The current location is, the location has been a problem for the past time of us trying to get any kind of new station. Uh, anywhere close to town or anything town, that right now that's the best location because it is centrally located. Uh, with use of, that's an ideal place, some of the possibilities, we can remove Melissa's old office, which would give us more room on that side with six one, which as you know, six one, we'd have to back it up. We've probably knocked her pictures off the wall a few times to get the truck in there with the aerial, but we could open that up and give us a little bit more space there. But if, all the trucks are bumper to bumper, you have to pull them out to even do anything with them. Uh, one of the things we can use, if we left that, we could use that as an office. Or we can use OPDs, places in office or maybe storage, or just several options that we've discussed on what we could do with it. With, with that part, the parking is more open for us to get in there. There is further expansion possibilities, but maybe a couple of extra bays, maybe on the fairground side or even the gravel lot behind, I know we only have, you guys only have a few feet behind there. But the commissioners have also discussed that they could give us more of that to where we can actually build on this, the station now. And that would help eliminate some of the exist, existed, existing tightness in the station. Uh, right now, if we spec down the new truck, we have to consider height, width, and length, which adds to the amount that we have to pay for it. Because usually they got stock items that they use, and if we have to make sure it's low enough to go in the door or short enough to go in the bay itself, that adds considerable expense to it and usually a longer wait time. With more room, we'd be able to do more maintenance and truck care. Overall, it would make it a little bit more efficient, safer in the station where we wouldn't have our meetings in there where the trucks are and also with the fumes from the trucks. Right now, we have to pull a truck out to have a meeting. Right now is not a good time. Right. With the weather today's not going to be bad or tomorrow, but when we have, uh, business meeting or training meeting, we have to pull a truck out. And usually it's either the new six four, which also has water on it, uh, but right now it's drained because it mainly used as medical, but again, we have to move trucks around to even work on them or to do maintenance or even try to keep them clean. Another thing on the meeting, we want to know if we could have access to Melissa's old office or we could set up as a meeting room till something is decided to where we wouldn't have to pull the trucks out. Uh, if we could have access to that, set tables up and always, always have it set up to where we wouldn't have to pull the trucks out for business meetings and training meetings and training meetings. We usually try to, depending on the weather, some of them in the winter inside, not necessarily hands-on, but more tactical and stuff like that, so that would eliminate having to pull a truck out in the winter. That's one thing, uh, on the new part of the town, us becoming part of the town, uh, I had correspondence with the town attorney. He classified our bylaws as more operational, uh, guides than actual bylaws. And as of right now, we're reviewing them and going to update them to that, and I'll turn them in when we get that set. Uh, I've passed out the open, sent them out to the department, we got some feedback, there's several, like once over not allowed to ride tailboard outside of town limits, so. And most of them don't even have tailboards if you work it, so that wouldn't fit, but that's one thing. And then another thing that's talked about was written mutual aid agreements with, uh, the other, our surrounding departments who run mutual aid. I started that process, I've got mutual aid agreement ready to go, I just need to contact the other departments, uh, looking at Boston, College Corner, Abington.
Now these guys need to approve those, the mutual aid agreements.
Yes.
They have to be the ones to approve those.
But, uh, do you get them, do I need to get them to sign it first, then bring it to you, or do I need to?
If you're doing, you would need to go with us first because they approved the document as it is written, and then we'll send it on to the Boston, Abington, that type of stuff.
Uh, let me drop that by?
Yep, we'll knock it on the next available agenda.
And getting on the other part was, uh, that's from inventory list, and we're going to do that this month. I've got the list you sent me and the list that we done last time, so we, we, again, we know a little bit what we've added and what we haven't, we're going to go through all the trucks and all the equipment that's kept in the station and try to get it as accurate as we can. Questions on that part?
Are you asking us to turn over that space tonight?
No, just let's use it until.
Yeah.
It later when it's determined what you're going to do with it, I mean.
So as far as turning that space over to currently?
Okay.
To do it now, you're wanting to just use it as, uh, a meeting room?
Yes.
Where my office was, my office is actually inside.
Didn't, I can't have just her office so we can set the tables up and have a place to meet without taking the trucks out.
Alright, alright.
Until later when you guys determine what you're going to do with the building, if we can have it or what you're going to do with it, what we're requesting.
Jim, how many volunteers is on the, pardon? How many volunteers do we have?
Twenty right now.
Twenty?
Got twenty that is actual active and one probationary. Again, if you ever, again, it's hiding there getting dressed, but it's trucks pulling out. Uh, we had two mutual aid runs today. So we did, we made it, we, we had to act in overtime, but again, it's, we can make it a lot more efficient, safer if we could expand it, which is what we plan to do in the future.
Are there any questions? I'll take all this in or advise it, make a decision in the next meeting.
I mean, as far as using the, the old office for a meeting room, I mean, it's electric and heat and everything still on, right?
Uh-huh.
We, it's not being used for anything, correct?
Nope.
Is there a direct hallway from the base here to where her office was?
Yes. There's a door. On the station side. Again, it's tight with trucks, but I mean, we could, we could squeeze through there for you.
Man, I don't have a problem with using, it's a meeting space. You have any extorted in there, Melissa?
No, not my one.
Um, you guys have anything left over there?
I'm going to want to be a file. Yeah.
So.
I think it just makes sense that I'm using, for a meeting space, uh, some of the other stuff, I mean, I think it's going to take time, something we need to look into more, come about, but. For now, the meetings I think should be taking place in that, so they don't have to go through all that. I don't know what should do.
I'm going to perform a motion.
Yeah, me though.
Everybody in agreement and any other questions? All those in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. All opposed? Start using that area for a meeting room, Jim?
Thank you.
And keep this, uh, informal, what fu- future, future plans you would like to have?
I'll unlock that door when I go up there tomorrow, the door between.
Yeah.
My office and the fire department.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll go and lock it because it's locked from my side.
Okay. Is there, there's a door going into your office from the main room too?
Um, I do have.
Access to this stuff.
Thank you.
And then on our side, is it locked there or is it on our side where we can get in?
I have another question about something else for Jim. Um, and Ross, maybe you know more about this. The National Emergency Response Information System, is that something the fire department reports to?
Is it on that?
Is it NERIS system? Are you familiar with this, any of you guys? Something, I guess you have to report to to get federal grants or anything, if you don't report that, you don't have a chance for any federal grants? I don't know where they are. Alright. I don't really know what it is, I have to look more into it. I mean, it's a new thing started this year, I guess.
So, in the.
Yeah, it's the National Emergency Response Information System, I think, NERIS. But I hate to take ourselves out of being able to apply for federal grants. It's all becoming a threat.
Anything else for Jim?
Thank you.
Alright. Uh, just a couple of things, one, uh, one to let you guys know, we did get the, uh, adjustments that we had last month, that those folks had come in and talked about on the water adjustments. They took care of them in themselves, they just went ahead and paid the bills and called what they was. Um, on water, weren't real happy about wanting to go on the basement, so I think that's why the gentleman was in the end, and just went ahead and paid the bills and fees and stuff. Uh, in the meantime, on that, I did check and see what a new bench test would be, the old one that we had was like pre, back, personal Snyder, old. Um, but the one I did look at, that they got news, they're running about seven thousand dollars and that will test that show a one inch meter. I mean, the only problem we'll have there is I'll have to talk to utility supply, we'll also have to see through Ford where we can send somebody to get certified then to do that. But I did check further into that to see what a bench test would be for us, that will do one meter, like I said, up to an inch. So, um, you know, take it for what it is, but that's a lot of money for, for checking, checking a meter. Now, we can send a man, but that policy's changed from them also, so that's going to be about three hundred and fifty dollars to send a meter in, then obviously we'll have to do all the switch out, but those last two did take care of the issue when they was asking for adjustments. They just went ahead and paid the bills and made it solid.
On that topic, uh, have you talked to anybody else to see, uh, if they have to send a man while they're charging?
I, I had a call around here, Derek, and been asking on that, with it being towards the end of the year, I just, we've been trying to hear your answer.
Yeah.
Um, but I could call and check to see like tolerance or something, check with one of the guys and see what they get.
I think that's, for us sending it in, probably would be better for us to call at the same time, perhaps change the policy.
Yeah, yeah, as I was talking to Becky, we also need to find out on that because once we take that meter out, we're going to have to probably put a full-on quote of ghost meter in. And then she's going to have to bill it for that with that number, then we're going to take that number back out of the system to put there, you know what I mean, so it's going to kind of be quite a bit of paperwork and then also, and for her to get into voice and everybody else to use that, so. That's all I've got. Chief? Um, Nick went to the academy today, it was his first day. I don't know when it yet. Uh, the new guys started training, hopefully they'll be done there shortly, get him out on his own. That's all we have, uh, I brought up, I don't know when it was, October, bad timing, I found out when I brought up suggestions for budget, but about Carl's pay going up since he became assistant chief.
It, it was considered in this salary ordinance, the way it is right now, he got extra money for that already this year.
Oh, okay.
They already added it to it.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't know, I just know they said reassignment this year, so.
They went ahead and got put in when we did the final, the final, um, vote audit. We, it was increased.
Oh, okay, I was on the way, okay. How long is tier two? Ten weeks. Did she stay out March nineteenth? Now, I don't know if that's his graduation day or if that's just the end of the year. Will you keep me updated on this graduation, I'm going to. Yeah, you're right, I was one of those, one of those, just wanted to know.
But I mean, I'll check with, check that again, but I'm pretty sure we already figured that in with the salary ordinance for this year.
Okay.
Moving on to resolutions, moving back to.
I got something, oh, I'm sorry. Um, kind of like I asked him, on your side is NIRS, National Emergency Response Reporting System?
No, I don't know if you looked at my Facebook, bro. You officially know the answer.
It's, it's, it's the same thing, it's what law enforcement reports to.
Okay.
I guess it's the same thing. Uh, and if we don't report, then we don't have a chance for seven months. And I don't. I, I don't know how you guys report. What was that, it was, what was it, my, it was NIRS. Uh, but I know, you know, before that, it's all enforcement agency, they qualify for that conference as well, so. I know we do it up here, I'm in charge of the fair, and if I am, it's super easy, you guys don't have to. Uh, sure. It's not hard.
Really?
Into a flash drive?
No, it might as well be that system.
Oh, okay. I was trying to save you guys money.
I can't remember the reports that we do, but I can't remember the African or.
Different.
Different. Well, we actually do that, which goes to the.
But that's a state, that's a state reporting system. Not federal, but it may qualify. On a. Oh, I have.
Uh, moving along with the resolutions, twenty twenty-six dash one, modification of employee handbook.
Basically, guys, it's pretty self-explanatory, I have the current policy, I have the revised policy, um, basically, most of this is to bring, uh, account for the fire department, uh, joining us, as well as some other little cleanup that I caught. Um, uh, when, when going back through this, um, Jim has reviewed all of it, he's actually helped me rewrite some of it, some of the revisions, so he's all re-reviewed, all of it, said it all follows. So we just need that to incorporate in the new employee handbook, which means also, all the, once that does happen, if you guys choose to revise or you have to basically. Uh, every, all the employees plus the fire department employees will all get new hand, employee handbooks, then you guys will also get new state forms and federal forms to figure out, figure out for payroll, as well as I'll need bank account numbers because I will only do direct deposit for when that goes down in November. So that's what this, this is all about right here.
So the one question that I had after reading that, it's, the fire department falls under part-time employees?
Volunteer.
There should be a separate.
As I said, the categories, regular, full-time, probationary, part-time, ten.
Well, now, then if you look underneath it, underneath revise, these all say the same, because this is what is actually in our, our employee handbook, but here, we're going to be add the addition of the fire department to this classification here. So this is actually what they will be classified here. So this is how it reads now, but then we're adding the fire department. And what their classification is.
So in essence, it'll be adding a volunteer.
Basically, yes, yes.
Any other questions on revisions?
Um, yeah, I did have a question. Um, the business hours revised, uh, the Liberty Police Department's staff twenty-four hours a day every day of the year. Is that something that we want in there, that it's staffed twenty-four hours a day every day of the year, because I know in the past few years, we've had situations where we've been having like two officers in a.
Rolling blackout.
Did, did we ever do that?
I mean, we're just basically saying that, that department is open twenty-four hours a day.
Correct.
Man twenty-four hours a day, so is the, I mean, like the volunteer fire department.
Right, but it says it's going to be staffed twenty-four hours a day, and we were real close to not having it staffed, and what I'm saying is something happens, and we did get short-handed once it's staffed, and then something happens.
Well, usually what hap, what's happened in the past is that the county has been gracious to cover, so it technically is staffed.
Right, I'm just thinking that we're going to put ourselves in a position if we got in that situation again.
I'll address that with Jim, so you guys can take all this to the mixing.
Any other things, uh, under this resolution that, uh, you'd like Melissa to check out? More clarity?
So how do you want it to read?
I don't know the wording, I guess, by looking at here, I, I just don't like the fact that it says staffed twenty-four hours a day, just in case you get in a crunch, as a small department, like we have been before. I don't, I, I really don't know, I'll take time to think about that, I guess.
Now, why don't you think about it and then email me what you want and I'll, I'll put it in there and then I'll have Jim read it and see if that's up to the standards that, um, under the, the handbook.
Well, it's worth it, you had just under normal conditions.
That's your guys' call.
We'll have a carryover on to the next meeting on that resolution. Resolution twenty twenty-six dash two.
They're basically just, uh, acknowledging my bond. Used to be back in the day, the council had to sign it, they don't have to anymore, but I go ahead and I do this anyway, so you guys know I am insured. That's the insurance company's power.
Make motion if we adopt resolution twenty twenty-six dash two.
Second.
Have a motion second on twenty twenty-six dash two. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All those opposed? Okay, uh, bids on the foreign interceptor?
We did not receive any bids on the interceptor. So, what you guys wanna do now?
When was, when did we ask for this?
For today?
Well, I mean, originally, when were, did we ask?
It was advertised two weeks ago.
Haven't we, I gotta think about one more. Haven't we in the past taken cars, let Howard take it to an auction?
No. There's very definitive ways that you have to get rid of these, these what we call real purchases, and that's not working. So we can either bid it out again, or basically have it stripped down and taken up to the recycling center.
Bid it out again. Also, how is that advertised?
Living here.
To, uh, bid it again?
And does, does that need a little run? It's just old war out.
What year is it?
Is that one of the ones that just got a recall on it? Cause that's one of the ones that we don't live off and on with the recalls.
Very well could. For the five degrees goes up to eighty-four. That's, it, it's the change of the palm.
Okay. Mister, Missus, Ma- Mister, Missus, Messer. You're up. Okay. I wanna say that's a goal. Never done this before. I've been here, lived here in this county since I was five years old.
See, it is interesting, cause I've never been to one either.
But, what I'm here for is that I noticed the water, or the towns side by side has a sticker on it. And I would have to have a sticker on my side, so.
We have one. On the side by side, on the Kubota?
Yeah.
We did, it's licensed through the state.
It's up on, it's up on the A post, right?
On the A post, yeah.
It wasn't visible, that's why we've asked it.
Yeah, no, we, it is, and in fact, I just spent thirty dollars for it to renew it.
Why would I have to renew ours this year? Move that this year, but.
And I do, I don't know if you guys need to show that I've got full coverage on that.
We, we have an, we have an issue, we've had several issues. We plow with our side by side downtown, we've done it for years for Carl Sharp, he paid for everybody to get plowed all the way down through there. Then it went to where Carl was only paying his, so we only start at like Carl's place, because the other places is covered. Carl's place, and go down to the title company, they all pay us to, to do that. We had two officers pull up on us and Mister Matt Royce that called the cops on us for no reason, we were doing what we were getting paid to do. I don't know, he, every time we're in town, I don't know if he's got an issue with me, he's got an issue with Mike, I don't know. But every time we plow, he tells us about the same thing, ever, over and over. His water, his water things, which I understand, I have got some pictures here. That one sticks way up, that's a trip hazard. This is what they look like walking down Union Street right now, right in front of the stores.
But we have to have them.
I know you have to have them, but I also know they're not installed properly, properly either, I'll tell you why. Go to Richmond, you'll see these. This is how you, you know, install trouble. That way, they're not a trip hazard to somebody. This, this is another place we plow, this is in front of my brother's house, on High Street. I don't know where that other picture went. I have a closer picture of it, this is all gravel, this is where they park at, people park at in front of his house. This is right in there, right where it's supposed to, right where that's at, and it's, there's no clearance to it, we have to, we just know where it's at, we go around that every time. But I'm just saying.
They drive over and everything.
Yeah, they drive over and everything else.
And then I know what's gonna happen, it gets tore up, well, I plowed over, no.
Cause we go around it.
And just like.
There's a closer picture of somewhere down.
And just like the town, I've walked that area to make sure where they're at. So I don't.
There used to be a trash can, like one drill sticks up, it's a small one, and it sticks up way high, the lid even rattles on it. And the only reason I know that's, cause I shovel it by hand, I shovel that by hand and shovel it out into the road. I don't wanna cause trouble, but I don't want no trouble, even, I've never had the cops call on me before, ever. And that kind of heat me up, just saying.
Well, and here's another issue. Okay, I went to the police, well, sheriff's office, I said, I wanted to know. I told him what date it was, December fifteenth, or thirteenth. It was around eleven thirty, twelve o'clock P M. I said, I would like to know what the call was for the sheriff, or for the police to get called out where I was plowing. He says, he went back, he come back, and I said, he said, what date was that again, I told you. Went back in, come back out, he says, thirty, no call for.
He checked twice, the county, the county don't have no call on it.
So.
So Matt must have called, one of the officers on his own, is on.
Heck it is, if he's gonna do that, I should have, I should have numbers to the police's cell phone number, like everybody else. To get called out, and I've never done that one. In this town, you didn't hurt anybody.
That's, that's.
I get the cops to call when we do.
That's a distance.
I would like to know why they would call.
What we know is there, we go around it every time.
There's a person here to tell you exactly what.
And then this is what they're supposed to be. Downtown, it should be that way, so it's not a trip hazard.
Yeah, I, I've never done nothing to hurt. I live in one, cause I live since I was five, but why would I? But I've never had cops call on me.
And he ca- he called, every time we're in town, it's not just this year, it's every time we're in town.
And I started plowing.
He comes and tells us something about the water line, every time.
Ever since he's been over, the water, he's told me, I've done this for.
I'm not a.
Ten years?
I'm not a school, I'm not a school kid, and if it happens, we got insurance, we got full coverage. We're not gonna intend on doing it, no. But I also went through Carl Sharp and asked him about it, and he goes, if that happened, you are covered, you've got full coverage. I just wanna be left alone to do what I wanna do, to help people in town. His dad's one of them, I plowed right, I mean, I, we, we shovel right in front of his dad's office.
In the back too.
In the back too, yes.
And, another thing, we had words. And I, I'm gonna fly, I mean, I'm not gonna lie. And he told me, I said, I got, he said, you shouldn't even have it in town. I said, I got a sticker on it saying, I can go through the county, I can ride in town, as long as I don't get on state highway, I can drive anywhere I want. He said, we need to keep it out in the country. That word.
And he said, all the store owners should be plowing their own, now that's our priority to, to hire somebody, is it not?
And who are you saying that said this, the officer or?
Matt, Matt, am I lying?
I, yeah, I did call the police up for that.
And did you say you ought to keep that out of the country? I don't remember.
Yeah, he did.
It, it's twelve thirty, um, yeah, it's your.
I did, I was plowing all, I was plowing during the evening too, and I was hired too, Matt. But there's a right way of doing it and acting civil with people, and then there's being, uh, but, and that's what she was being there.
He told us that way.
That's the way, that's the way, he comes towards us every time, if you, if you need him, you can have him, if not, I'll throw him away. I'm just keeping these two, cause it's got my information.
But, the, and she's like, the main reason, I, I mean, that's the way them do. It's with her being related to somebody.
In town. Is what I think is over, I think he's harassing us because I'm related to certain person in town that he used to work with. I just wanna be left alone, is all I'm asking.
And then, we got her mom driveway. And he comes down there with the side by side, one strip. And her eight-year-old mom can't drive down that driveway, just one strip, down the alley. I cleaned the driveway, I cleaned the whole alley out. Well, he kinda act like I.
Comment on that also. I'm not gonna go to your mom's and plow her in, and that's basically what they're doing when they go down through her alley. I just want, I just want to be left alone, and I'm not, I'm not looking him, I'm not hitting his water lines, if I do, then my insurance will pay.
Here's the reason, where's this? It's got the tractor that you used on nerd drive, on nerd sidewalks. The courthouse uses the tractor in the right.
You go on more on our sidewalks, and he.
But he says, I, I, I tend to be cold, he don't want it out into that.
Does the, from my knowledge, does your blade, is it steel or?
It's.
And it collapses, if he hits something, it's gonna drop.
I got loose enough, it hit something, it's gonna look, just because of that stuff. It ain't gonna and just like I told him, I said, I read somewhere, lifted it up one hand, I said, it ain't heavy enough to do anything.
It ain't.
Just push it out. Just like I say, I, I've never been this lonely, feeding, and it's sad to say. I lived here since I was five years old. And I am sixty-two.
I can go without a forensic, if, if it's building tipped in here, he'd be doing everything he could to help us. If it's Matt Royce and me involved, he hit Ted with me every time, and he aggravates me every time, what do we left him?
And it's, it's gonna get down to, here, it's gonna be down to, I'll have a strike.
Because there's no sense in him telling us the same thing every time, five times a year that we plow, it's just not to me, that's harassment. He's not my dad, he's not my mayor, he's not, in my opinion, he's nobody to me, I just wanna be left alone, I'm not hurting him.
But he'll sit there and drive around me while I'm plowing, and I'm wondering, who is this? Go back up to the.
Courthouse.
Courthouse.
And just sit there.
Sit there and watch. And I'm thinking, I don't know who the hell this, I don't keep plowing, and soon as he knew the police were gonna shut up.
That, that was a waste of the police officer's terms too, because I did not, we did nothing wrong. He wasn't running up and down them streets in spinning circles, or anything else, he was plowing like he was supposed to, I was shoving it all onto the street. He was pushing it up into a pile, we were told by him to plow, pile it, three or four years, three years ago anyway. Pile it on that corner, we'll move it, well, I understand, he was done that night, he wanted to move across the street, but really and truthfully, we shouldn't have to move it across the street, if it's piled on the corner, and it's shoved up everywhere, it's out of the way, it should have been by.
It shoved up not the, he said, that he get it, and that's what I did.
So, I mean, you know, if, are, are we allowed to plow into that pile there, or are we supposed to just put it back out there and let him plow it again? See, we was trying to be nice.
She was shoving it out the street, and I was plowing it to the, so it ain't right the right by wall.
Do you know what officer spoke to you?
Jackson, he didn't spoke words.
He didn't say nothing. He called, Jason, or, uh, Jackson and Sandra, it married both came. Is it like we got swarmed by cops because we were plowing? Ridiculous.
And he said, you know what time it is, I said, why are you in here doing it now? I said, cause it quits, no, I said another word, but, I said, it quits, no, so I'm in here.
To me, I had no more, there was no more for a cop to be involved.
And, and the way it was called, it should not be that way. It should have been.
I mean, I.
There should have been a call to the police station, they get dispatched down to the police station, I end calling. On a cell phone, calling the other officer, lady, come in here.
If I done something to warp to be in trouble, okay, call the cops on me, but why harass me every time I'm in town? I call bull crap.
Have addressed to that. We appreciate you coming in. Letting us know what your feelings are, and hopefully we'll get to the bottom of it.
Okay, but you do really need to check on this one right here, sticks up so far.
Cause what, it, this summer, sometimes.
It is really bad, it's like right there through your dad's place, like almost right there in that area.
Yeah, sometimes got sandals on.
Cut their toe off or anything.
But when I plowed, there's a trash can and stuff around it, but.
Usually, but there's not.
There wasn't this time. And I mean, do I wanna know, do we need to see what happens, do we need to come back here, or do we get confirmation of what happened, or what? I don't, I don't know how this works.
Well. My feeling is, let your feelings be known. Like I said, I appreciate.
And I hope we've been civil and, uh, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, and I didn't, when I saw this on the agenda, we not being president at the time, but I'm thinking, I don't want this to get into a shouting, that she said, she said.
Why go get to that?
We appreciate it, um, I think every story's got two sides. I, I'm not familiar with the laws in regards to what you're talking about. I know the side by sides, I know the county's law is different than the town's law. Yeah, okay, so, uh, because I see people coming in from the county, driving through their town, that is they're, they're going against our law, or the way our ordinance reads. Because they're running on state highway.
No.
I know you, I, I'm just saying what I'm seeing.
We can, we can cross the state highway, but we can't run.
Yeah, so can I.
Yeah.
I gotta go, car.
Yeah.
And, so, but what I'm saying is, I see other people from the county come in, they're going up and down the highways. Um, they're letting their kids drive, so, you know.
Yeah, um.
We'll, we'll, like I said, we'll, we'll. We'll, we'll, like I said, we'll look into that.
But, where we live, you know exactly where we live, because the county road, the whole way, it's like.
We really cut across, if we drive it into town, we'd be hallway in whenever it's snowing.
And we're in, we're in town limits when we get into town.
Yes, we are.
So.
But we cut across and take the side roads up, so. Well, we're still in city limits, we can still come up that way, but it doesn't matter, I mean, we don't usually.
Well, I think, I think your biggest concern is you feel like you're being harassed.
I am being harassed, no doubt.
Yeah, I think that as a board, um, a couple of us would like to talk to all parties involved.
Okay.
And see what we come up with, and then one of us, probably the president, will be in contact with you.
I mean, I need to, I wanna know.
What was ever, you know, we don't, we just need it to have, we just, we wouldn't.
Next time I come in to plow snow, you're gonna come, yeah, I don't want that no more. And if it happens again, I'll get, I'll get worried, uh, whatever they call it.
Or restraining order.
Restraining order. Stay away.
And I shouldn't have to, from a, from an employee, and, and we are actually employees of, or five of them businesses now, we shouldn't have to. I mean, it's not like we make a killing off of shovel, we're doing it as a favor to them store owners.
Because that one, the hairstylist, she might side by side tore up last year. Cause they haven't got it fixed, but I'm here next, this year doing it. And, I mean, the hairstylist said, it was like, golly, well, she was paying to do her backlog. I forget, she had a truck from him doing it, and she said, I can't believe it.
She said, she can't afford it, at least we were affordable, and anyway, and we like, we don't charge him that much, we don't.
Business is business.
Well.
So, thank you again, we, um. We'll talk to people involved, and talk to the officers that came down, and we'll just go from there.
Okay, but I would really like to know.
Do we need to leave our phone number with you, so you can get back with us?
You can, yeah. Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I do appreciate you guys with.
Thank you.
And, good luck with your, I don't want that position, and good luck with you. Thank you very much.
Can't stand these, man. What you got on frontier, Matt?
Uh, Melissa got this email since her, um, she printed it off. Um, I've looked at it a little bit, I haven't had a lot of time with the holidays the way it was, but she did say, probably got for you guys to take a look at. Uh, you know, I'll be honest, I haven't had contact with anything like that as far as.
And the only people that have, have sent this to me, they've sent me like ten different emails with the same stuff, but it's a permanent place, it's not frontier themselves, it's.
Right, it's at Pearson.
Pearson Engineering.
Yeah.
They just keep, I'm gonna be about it.
I mean, I hate to say, I don't know where you guys are at, but we've already granted Comcast, uh, permission, as long as things went like it is, I've got the final design from them. Uh, I just haven't had a chance to print it off because it come over the holidays also. I, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we can't, we can't keep putting fiber in every hole around town, and we'll never have anywhere to go, I mean, they can go with. Shoot next to one another, we're gonna have too many things in the, in the rideaway. Um.
With your limited knowledge of it so far, are all these numbered squares areas that would be affected?
Correct, and what they're, and what they're gonna do. Yeah, and they're gonna, they're gonna do forty-six hundred eighty-two foot, they're gonna bore, and then they're gonna do forty-seven hundred seventy-one foot overhead. So they're still boring, and they're still, you know, going overhead, looks like, but, um. Yeah, without talking to anybody or anything like that, I've looked through them a little bit, but, you know, I mean. I just haven't, haven't had time to go through, you know, been through all this.
As I even said, at one of our previous meetings. Uh, when Comcast presented their plans, that they were getting it hiding.
Correct, correct, yeah, when we start, we're gonna, we're gonna have nothing but full boxes around. Between sidewalks and around everywhere you go, you're never gonna build it, people's yard are gonna be nothing but a plastic box out front, like, you know, through there, so. That, well, I, you know, I don't know.
And is Comcast in the same location here then?
Do, what do you mean, as far as that, yeah, they're gonna be the same layout, yes.
The same layout?
For the most part, yes, from what I can tell, they're gonna be laying out in the rideaways, in the easements, just like everybody else.
But on, on the, in the same side of town?
Yes, yes, Comcast is going the whole town, they're going, they're going ninety-two thousand, ninety-two thousand foot of that. With approximately, uh, seven hundred of the, the flat boxes, I got them into where they're going to, the flat boxes instead of the towers. They're gonna put a flat box in, so. Yep.
So, probably what I should do is just permit, whatever this place is, this engineering, um, basically, we'd get in touch with you.
It's fine.
And just say, hey, you know, and I already told them we have concerns in some of these areas that there isn't gonna be enough room. We know that from, they need to talk to you to know which areas those are, because we know that there's just no, no more room for cable.
I mean, if they were going all overhead, sure, but when you start putting another five thousand foot, you know, underground and boring into side, everything else. Along the foot we've already got there, they're getting ready to bore, I mean, things are pretty tight.
What would be the benefit, I, I don't know, it's the benefit between splitting it, bore, and overhead?
I think what they're doing is because they've already got the access for overhead, see with all their poles, and then some of that stuff where they're gonna have their own stuff already set. The reason why they're bored is because they don't have access to those areas with a pole anymore. See, like Duke Energy's come in and said, okay, telephone boxes are coming off our poles, we're putting new stuff up, we don't want nobody's stuff on our poles. Like, we, we can't put a sign up, we're not legally allowed to put a sign on anybody's pole now like that. So that's what Duke Energy's saying, keep your stuff off ours, you gotta figure it out, but if they've already got a pole set somewhere. They can go ahead and take the old telephone, or take it, run it off of that, their existing poles they have.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I just, I just haven't had, I'll be honest, just haven't had a lot of time to look at it, Melissa got it to me, I just, with the holiday stuff, we've just been a little busy.
Yeah, I'll just tell them that, you know, they'll need to talk to Matt, um, your guys that have casinos, where there's room and where there's not.
Anybody else got anything from good of the board? Anything from the board members?
Or sheets for, uh. Animal vouchers?
I got a more, our teachers, we hold them, and they just have tops.
Mm-hmm.
They're open, right next to them, with the phone lines and that data line and stuff like that. So they've been transformed over the years, and we're laying down all that, there's two poles. Within the people, we've got.
Yeah. Actually, they're really nice about it, they could, like I said, they could come in and tell them, I'll take their stuff down off their poles, and just pull the poles out, we got it, and that's what Duke's doing.
That's probably like anything else, and well, somebody screwed it up, so it's easier to say absolutely nothing, than to make a combination.
Yep.
That's why I'm, they can sweep that open, give it another pole, that's been off, cable and phone lines are.
Yep, yep. So we're just gonna run out of their case. And she gave me an old, and now they're trying to tell guys, want to be, uh, bike or fire. And she, and she's in my face, but I didn't talk to her. This is, I think this.
It's easy to say, yeah, it's just a, but then it's going in and it's out, and.
That's right, that's one problem.
It's out, I think it's been there probably a hundred years. Also, while you guys are doing this, this is, um, just so you guys know, this is my no time with, uh, the year end. And the annual financial report through March first, so, um, that's all I'll be working on, so maybe like social projects, things like that. It'll have to wait after March, cause I just, it won't, I won't have any time.
So, like, my what?
Year end, year end, yeah, I live year end till March first.
Should I wait till?
No. Just, any other things, projects people want, I can get it.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn. Second, second, all those in favor?
Who was the second?